Yeah.
I know Sherry got it. It's adorable.
Oh, yeah.
All right, everybody. It is 6:02, so I am going to call the meeting to order. I want to welcome everybody today here at the auditorium. Appreciate you coming here on a summer hot day, but important stuff that we're talking about, so welcome. So, moving forward, additions or deletions from the agenda? Anybody? So, I do have one. I like to add a discussion item after the August reopening discussion about the board retreat that we postponed in a couple of days, so we'll talk about that. Next, minutes from our June 15th meeting. Has everybody had a chance to check out the minutes? And do we have any questions? I see no's across the board, so do we have a motion to approve the minutes of June 15th? A second? Any questions from the public about our minutes from our last meeting? I don't see any questions, so all in favor of approving the minutes? Posed? The minutes are accepted. All right, so moving forward, discussion items. So, we're going to talk about the August reopening discussion here, which is most likely why everybody is here, and we have quite a few people on Zoom as well. So, I'm going to say a few words before we open up discussion, basically giving an outline as to how we're going to proceed. First, we're going to hear from Dr. Josh and Louisa Driscoll, who is our COVID-19 coordinator, about the medical foundations for our decisions. Next, we're going to hear from Dr. Ricka regarding the hybrid decision rationale. He's going to talk about some of the feedback we received from their survey and some of the basis of our decision-making from that survey. He's going to discuss where we are at now with the hybrid formula, and he's going to discuss about the Agency of Education criteria that they passed directed to all the school districts on July 15th, last Wednesday, and how it has caused us to pause somewhat with our decision-making. Next, we'll open up for board discussion, give board a chance to weigh in with any questions, comments, and then, of course, we'll open up to the audience. What we'll do with the audience is we'll take a question from the audience, and then we'll take a question from the Zoom audience and alternate with that, and we'll see where we're at from there. So, moving forward, if Dr. Josh or Louisa would like to talk about their decision-making and how it has impacted our progress, so take it away, please.
Well, thanks for inviting me. I'm Dr. Josh Cantrowitz. If anyone doesn't know me, or some of you I know from the office and the community. Louisa and I talked, and, you know, we have quite a bit of background in terms of how we're thinking about COVID-19 in our community and communities outside of ours. As you know, if you've followed the news, Vermont is in a unique place. Luckily, we have fairly low rates of COVID-19 disease, and that contributes to our decision-making. If you've been following the news, other parts of the country have far greater, and we're lucky so far that we're not in that situation. We want to keep it that way. Honestly, I didn't come prepared to talk about the decision-making process. I actually came prepared to answer questions, so Louisa has been working in much more detail on this, and maybe she should talk a little bit about the specifics you just brought up, and then I could answer any questions that came up, or I could address my comments to specific questions that the board had.
Dr. Josh, I was also hoping you could lay a bit of a medical foundation for us around the decisions from the Agency of Education that we are to wear masks. Anybody who's in this building is going to be required to wear a mask, as well as the decision to have physical distancing, and how those are both mitigating factors for the risk of spreading the virus.
Great, yeah. So, to clarify the details of how we're approaching this. So, the American Academy of Pediatrics has come out with statements. Obviously, there's a branch that's national, and then there's our Vermont branch. Then, the Department of Health has been undergoing a three-times-a-week conversation with all the pediatricians and medical providers in the state, talking about best practices and the research on COVID-19, and we've been a part of that, as well as many of the nurses in the community, nurse practitioners, and people in the public health world. So, to address those two issues, we've all been on a roller coaster learning about COVID-19. At first, obviously, everyone thought about this as a virus that we didn't know a lot about, and we know that viruses spread in various ways. We know that in our own homes and in schools, that touching surfaces that viruses may be living on can then put that virus on us, and if we touch our faces specifically, that's how you can get a lot of different viruses, including things like influenza, the common cold virus, stomach bugs, et cetera. What we have learned, if you've been following the news, is that COVID-19 seems to like to spread mostly through respiratory droplets. And if you look at which respiratory droplets are the most profound, the bigger ones, that when you speak, or cough, or sneeze, or yell, come shooting out of your mouth, and they land somewhere within about six feet from you. So, they go out in front of you, and then gravity pulls them towards the ground. If you've followed the news, there is also some concern that the finer respiratory droplets that are in the air after you speak may hover in the air, not drop to the ground, and be in the environment around you. There was a statement that came out a few weeks ago from some scientists throughout the country and the world stating that the CDC and the World Health Organization should pay more attention to that. Honestly, we don't know how much those types of respiratory droplets contribute to spread, but we certainly think those heavier respiratory droplets play a big role. So, when it comes down to why we wear these masks, and this is the most important detail that we've learned over the last few months of research, that when I talk, or yell, or scream, or laugh, or whatever, I'm going to try to contain those respiratory droplets within the mask, and hopefully, everyone in the community can do that in order to keep us all safe. So, that's the rationale behind the mask-wearing. There are a lot of questions around that, especially around young kids, and how well they'll be able to wear masks, but to start with the basic principle that mask-wearing is vital to the protection of us all and preventing the spread of the disease, that should be one of our guiding principles. And then, I think your second question was really around spacing, so, you know, again, this six-foot distance is a critical distance from research, so spacing us out six feet, if you've been in restaurants or stores where they're using Plexiglas, the concept is the same, that you're trying to prevent the spread of diseases. It hits some kind of surface and hopefully prevents it landing on somebody else. And that is, also, if you've looked at some of the recommendations out there, there's been some gray area around three feet versus six feet, depending on whether you could put some kind of barrier, like a Plexiglas barrier between people. And then, you know, lastly, it comes back to the cleaning piece. Viruses still spread by touching things, and then touching your face, mucous membranes, mouth, nose, eyes, and so what we're trying to do is control the spread in that manner as well. And so, cleaning is the other big component to this. That's a bit of an overview.
Louisa, did you want to add some more to that foundation?
Is this mic on? Yes. I just wanted to thank you all for being here and just demonstrating that you care about what's happening here at the school, and we just want to acknowledge that this has been a really anxious time with lots of unknowns, and we take the health and safety of the St. Johnsbury School children very seriously. So, we, in preparing for opening up, we are following a 26-page document that was put out by the Agency of Education, with the help of folks from the Health Department and many other experts. So, the goals are, we do not want to have a case of COVID-19 within our school. So, firstly, we'll be doing things to try and keep the infection out of the school, like the screenings you went through tonight, and we will ask that we don't have extra visitors in our building. Then, we will be doing things like Dr. Josh mentioned, wearing masks and physically distancing, washing hands lots, and cleaning lots to prevent any spread within our building. And then, lastly, understanding that we can only try to prevent the spread of the disease. We can't, you know, we can't say 100% it won't happen, so we want to detect illness quickly and do contact tracing, and then, you know, take care that it doesn't spread throughout the building. So, those are kind of the guiding principles of the decision-making that we're following.
Thank you, Louisa. Dr. Ricka, would you like to speak of the hybrid decision rationale and everything afterwards?
Sure. Before we do, for the folks at Kingdom Access, we're being told that they're still having some trouble with the audio, so that's just feedback. I know that there's nothing perhaps that you can do, but I'm just passing along the feedback. Welcome, all of you. I said to the first few people who are here, it's great to have live people in this building. We haven't had real people in this building since March something, and that's really heartening to see all of you. We're really grateful that you took the time to come out. Thank you very much. I want to frame my comments and share with all of you, both here and watching at home, that we are approaching this decision, and these decisions, and this year that's in front of us, from one place and one place only, and that's an ethic of care. When a student asks me what a superintendent does, I tell them my job is to make sure that they're all safe, and welcomed, and included, so that they can learn to the best of their ability. This is really the first time in my professional career as an educator that the word "safe" has come into question outside of the emergency drills, based on the unfortunate reality of school shootings in our country. So, please know that anything that you hear tonight, anything that you see as we go forward together this year, comes from that one place, and the entire reopening task force is coming from that one place of an ethic of care. As Louisa said, we took the document from the Agency of Education and the Department of Health as our foundation for what we were doing. We are using that as a baseline. We are taking what those people put together and took the time to put on paper as our parameters, if you will, our guardrails. And so, while there may be things in that guideline that, as a human being, I may disagree with, as a professional, I may disagree with, there may be things in the document that some of the people on our team may disagree with, there may be some things in that document that you all, as members of the public, disagree with. Coming from an ethic of care, we are taking that document, and we are using that to guide our work going forward, as we try to find a way to have as much in-person as we possibly can, while still doing what Dr. Josh and Louisa talked about, keeping the virus at the front door, if at all, and really doing everything that the research is telling us, including mandating masks for everybody who comes into the building, adults and students, and including the six-feet physical distancing. I like to say "physical distancing." I don't like to say "socially distancing." That's a really deliberate way that I've tried to approach this. While I am physically distant from Tom and from Mark, I don't like to think of myself as socially distant from them, because a really big foundational piece of what we're doing is we are going to try to rebuild relationships when our students come back to us, because we know that that's been lost since March 13th. For more context, we have over 600 students who are enrolled in the St. Johnsbury School, and we have over 170 adults that are employees. That's almost 800 people putting into this building on a daily basis, and the physical density that 800 people take up would not honor the six-foot distancing, and would not honor the opportunity to mitigate the spread of this virus. And again, I'm going to use words that Louisa used. We can only mitigate it at this point. We cannot eliminate the risk entirely, so we're going to do everything that we can to try to mitigate that. And we're going to encourage you as families, and certainly for those that are watching on either Kingdom Access or on Zoom, we're encouraging the community to do that as well. I was really heartened to read, I think it was last week, that the CalRecs editorial page was urging our community to wear masks. I absolutely understand that it has become a partisan issue. I'm not here to advocate for one side or the other. I'm here to tell you that the research tells us that that is how we're going to keep this community safe. And so, I'm going to urge certainly families, and certainly echo the CalRec in saying that we expect that the masks will be worn when adults and students are in this building. So, the hybrid decision unfortunately was a really easy one for us, but it was incredibly hard. I, like most of you, when school was dismissed abruptly in March, was hoping for the latter part of August to be a time when we could open our doors and embrace everybody back at once, but the science tells us that's just not safe. And I will also tell you, as someone who is dealing with safety on a regular basis, this is the first time in my 24 years in education, I will also share that in 24 years of education across two different time zones, three different states, I've never lost a student, or a faculty member, or an employee on my watch, and I really selfishly want to keep that streak intact as we go into this year. And so, again, I go back to where I started. We're coming from a place of an ethic of care. That's where we're beginning our conversations. So, based on the guidelines, then I would like to take my hat off to, where are you? Patrick Campbell, and hiding behind the podium, Jeremy Ross. Jeremy Ross is our co-principal for the upper school. Patrick Campbell is our director of facilities. They went around to representative classrooms in this building when the guidance came out, and they pulled every single piece of furniture from three classrooms, representative classrooms of our building, every single piece of furniture, and they put desks in rows. Now, rows, if we see students in rows with face to back, or to the back of the head, that will also mitigate the spread more, but I think all of you in this room know, I certainly will tell you as an educator, that's not the best educational environment for students, to sit in rows, and to be in rows, and to stay in that spot all day. And the bottom line is, we still could not accommodate all of our classes. That was no room for a teacher desk. That was no room for a bookshelf. That was no room for any other learning materials. Excuse me, I'm going to let somebody in to our meeting. We were able to get about a high of 18, and that was squeezing a little bit of the six-foot guidance, which we know if we're back of the head to front of the head, that mitigates it. That was on the high end. On the low end, we were able to put 14 desks in. And so, that was a sad but easy decision for us, that we could not bring our students and our staff back in a manner that is what we are being taken as to be safe. So, we made the decision to begin work on a hybrid model. And then, as Mark mentioned, Wednesday afternoon, July 15th, we received the further guidance from the Agency of Education on what the hybrid models have to look like. And I will be very candid with you, we had not, without that guidance in front of us, we were not able to know what that guidance was going to be, and so, our plan had to be paused. So, we are meeting again as a full task force this Wednesday. I can tell you that since we met last week, Mr. Ross, Lydia Cochran, who is our co-principal for the lower school, Louisa, Patrick, Carol Lee Stewart, I hear myself, so I'm going to mute this person, I apologize, we are meeting, we are still doing our work, and our goal is to have more specific details and guidance for you, hopefully in early August. What we want the public to know are a number of things. Most important, number one, even if we do not have students, all students in this building every single day, students will be fed. One of the things that Carol Lee Stewart is working on is a way to get food to students when they are not here, so that is a must, and that's something that we will have. Number two, I want to be clear, because hopefully all of you in this room took part in the survey that we sent out about halfway through our emergency school dismissal, and from that survey, four themes emerged, and I reported on this in our June meeting to the board, but I want to be very explicit about the themes that emerged during that survey, and the things that we're going to be paying particular attention to as we think about what remote learning looks like. Number one, you as families asked us for more feedback, so certainly, as we conceive of learning away from school, we are going to build in a better feedback loop. Number two, families asked us specifically to email parents, as well as students, when assignments came out, and so that's something that will be part of our plan as well. Number three, some of our families asked for more teachers to record lessons and send those as well, so that's certainly something that we're going to incorporate in part of our plan. And while it was emergency distance teaching in March, this is going to be remote learning, so I can assure you, we will be doing evaluation and grading for students when they are not physically in our building. We had some of those in place before we saw the guidance from the Agency of Education regarding hybrid models, but we did not have it all. And so, my hope had been, our timeline that I proposed to Mark the Friday before last, was that we would roll out our hybrid learning plan to the board last Tuesday, then we would roll out our plan to the teachers last Wednesday, and we would roll out the plan to all of you last Thursday, along with an invitation, that you still got, to come to this meeting and discuss the specifics of the meeting. But as Mark said, did your stomach churn when you saw the guidance on Wednesday afternoon? And the answer is yes, because we didn't nail everything down that the Agency of Education had asked us to nail down. And after some frustration from not only myself, but our reopening task force team, we put that aside, and we got ourselves right back to work. So, we know that it's on your mind. I can tell you, it's on my mind as a parent. I'm wondering what my own children's school is going to do, and how that's going to look. But as we look forward, please know that we're doing everything we can to keep all of your children safe. Please know that we are going to do everything we can to assess your children when they come back to us, and find out what we still have to do in terms of their education. But I'll go back to where I started. We're starting from an ethic of care and a place of rebuilding relationships. We miss your children desperately. That's the best way that I can frame it. And while the hybrid decision was an easy one, just in terms of our numbers, it was so hard on all of us to have to say that out loud. So, anything more that you wanted me to add as part of this? Okay. Thank you.
So, at this time, I want to open up to the board for discussion. This will really be our last time to discuss some of this hybrid model before they make the decision, as our next board meeting is not until the 15th of August, which will be certainly past the time when they have made the hybrid decision. So, if anybody on the board has any comments, questions, please feel free.
So, my first question is, what can families expect on days when their children are learning from home? And while we don't have specifics to that yet, as we're working on that plan, what are some ideas that are out there?
So, somebody just reminded me on Zoom to model good mask-wearing, so I'm going to model good mask-wearing. Thank you, Jessica Angel. Okay, so I'm going to speak to a specific, and that's a great question, Eileen, thank you. A school district in remote or hybrid mode may record a student as in attendance if, on each day for which attendance is recorded, an educator makes contact with the student by video chat, or telephone, or the student logs into our learning management system. So, at the bare minimum, we're going to be having contact with our students every day. That's the minimum in order to record a student day as a student attendance day. And there are instructional hours that the State Board of Education has set out, that are broken down by grade level, that we will be following, at least, at the very least, as a goal to move forward in terms of work for our students while they are remote learning. So, at the very least, contact from So at the very least, contact from a staff member here in this building, whether it's a video chat, whether it's a phone call, whether that student is logging into our Google Classroom, and instructional hours commensurate with the child's grade in school.
I'll let you keep going in just a minute. I realize this is probably a question that has some planning involved, but how are you going to assess children's performance this year? It's a very different thing when you don't have them in the classroom. And so you're really talking about having kids in two different locations at two different times. How can you assess their progress and their, you know, meeting of the goals of the year?
So that's a great question, and that's a question that's on every parent's mind. We're going to start the year with assessments, and that's something that we had discussed even during the emergency dismissal, was that we would have to come back in August and assess where our students are, and then make appropriate goals from there. And if anyone ever wondered if teachers wear capes, this will be one of the demonstrations that our adults in this building wear capes. Because one of the things that I've learned in the two-plus years that I've had the opportunity to serve here is that there is no limit to the ends with which adults in this community, particularly this school, will go to reach and connect with their students. And so while it might not look exactly the same for, I'm going to pick on Eileen, since she has four children in our school, it might not look at all alike for any of the four children that Eileen Dickinson and her husband have in the school. But I am confident that all four of Eileen's children will be assessed appropriately and will find a way to grow during this year. It may not be huge growth like we're used to. It may have to be, we may have to adjust our expectations. But I think it's fair to say that our teachers are committed to rebuilding those relationships, reconnecting, and finding a way to have our children grow. But in terms of the specifics, I definitely don't have the answer to that yet.
Piggybacking off of that, based on the results of those assessments, assuming that certain interventions will need to be made, will, with the restrictions that we have in place, how will we be able to provide those interventions in groupings that are necessary?
So one of the struggles that we're going to have is that typically, and I'll use speech and language as a really easy target. So typically, we have a speech-language pathologist. And let's say all six of you here on the stage are in various classrooms in third grade, but you're all eligible for speech-language work with a special educator. Typically, that special educator would come, it would be the third-grade block of time. They would take two from this classroom, two from this classroom, and two from that classroom. And they would meet together in a common room, and they would work on speech-language together. We won't be able to do that, because no matter what, no matter when your child comes to school in August, they will be staying in that potted classroom for the day. That's going to, number one, reduce the chance of spreading the virus through passing time and through common space. But number two, and perhaps just as important, is that if a case is suspected or if a case is found to be in that classroom, each classroom will have a sign-in sheet for every single human being that comes into that classroom and will assist us in contact tracing. So for example, we'll have to take those two SLP students separately from these two SLP students, separately from these two SLP students. And while that becomes a math equation for our special educators to figure out, it's not one that they're ill-equipped to solve. So while the delivery will look different, we are still committed to, and there have already been a couple of questions in the chat about special education and 504 plans, those plans are still going to go forward. And while they may need to be adjusted with the IEP team or the 504 team, that's a discussion for the IEP team and the 504 team.
I have a question. The guidance specifically talks about the importance of meeting the needs of students who are either immunocompromised and/or have behavioral issues that will make a day in a classroom prohibitive for them or close to it. And for those students, as you look at what, as we move from emergency teaching remotely into what a comprehensive online learning program would look like, I mean, I think that there really needs to be, I'm wondering from a task force perspective, how you're going to structure yourselves in a way so that we can maximize those experiences in case, A, we go to a full online learning system, as well as all of our students are going to be in that position most likely fifty percent of the time. So how do we make sure those best practices are then transferred into other classrooms? Because obviously, the quality of online learning has to increase, right? For a variety of reasons, for the students who can't come at all, and then for the rest of them. So from a, as you're putting together a task force and thinking about that, I'd like it to be addressed.
So the first thing I would say is we're going to take the feedback that we got that I shared in specifics as the, sort of the backbone to where we're going to go from. We're going to have to build in more structures and supports than we had during emergency distance teaching, because while not a lot of time, we have a little more time. And we're going to have to communicate often with families who have children who are unable to come to school if they're immunocompromised, or if their behavior prohibits them from wearing a mask all day. I mean, a lot of what we're going to ask not only of our families, but of our staff and of our students is flexibility, that we're going to do the best that we can. We're not going to ever fall down in requirements. We're not going to ever fail to meet the standards of an IEP or a 504 or a child-specific medical condition. But it might not look the same as it did this year before we were all sent home.
I'm going to put the cart before the horse just a little bit. So the state of Vermont's been moving towards a proficiency-based learning. As you just pointed out, we're going to have trouble meeting our goals for significant, hitting the same degree of education that we have when we have all the people in the classroom. Is there thought being given at the state level as to how we deal with the tail end of this as we enter this? Because this is one of those deals where the ends and the means do relate, you know? If our kids come out of this not quite prepared for the next step, are we going to have some guidance from the state as to what we do with those kids? Because I don't think we, especially in a state where we're pushing for proficiency-based, should just push the kids ahead. And like I said, my suspicion is, is the Agency on Education has quietly thought about this, but also recognizes that that's of later concern. But are we thinking about that at the state, at the school level?
So I'll say the best, the best way that we are going to begin to address that is through the assessments that we're going to give when our students return and trying to find a way to build on those, identifying what was lost, prioritizing what was lost, and trying to build that in. But I hear you, it could be, it could be a domino effect at the same time. And it's, I once heard that the word faith is a belief in something that's not yet seen. I have trust in the adults that serve in this school district, that they're going to find a way to ensure that the priorities of each grade level are met. And that if there are pieces that are not carried from one grade level to another, for whatever reason, they are outside of the fundamental areas, which for me are literacy and math to begin with. Those are my, I will be perfectly honest as a professional, those are my greatest concerns, are around foundational work in literacy and in math. And I know that falls on rough ears for the content specialists who are in social studies and science out there in the world. But I would offer humbly that you have to have good math skills to do science, and you have to have good literacy skills to do social studies or science. So I'm not trying to slight any of our professionals who are out there, who are our math-science specialists, or excuse me, our science and social studies specialists. But I am saying that we're going to be putting a priority on math and literacy as we go forward. And no, the state has not given us any specifics around that.
I have a question. What's the current thinking regarding after-school activities, like our catch program, sports, theater, music? Where does that stand in the planning?
Sure. So we are certainly planning on having an after-school program. It was at least made public to the staff. Sarah Willey is not going to be returning as the catch director, but we've hired a tremendous, Mr. Ross and his team have hired a tremendous new director, whose name is Brian Duff. He has moved his family to the Northeast Kingdom and is really excited to begin working on and planning on our after-school program. We certainly realize that in a time of remote learning, after-school, not only programming and care is just as critical as when we don't have a global health pandemic. So that's the after-school program. For sports, I feel very fortunate that we don't have a high school. That's my responsibility, I'll say, because the VPA has asked that there be at least a two-week delay in the beginning of high school sports. And so the short answer for that is we're going to follow the guidance of the VPA in terms of middle school sports. In the twenty-five-page document that we received on June fifteenth from the Agency of Education about the reopening of schools, it specifically talked about chorus and band as two problematic areas of our curriculum, simply because chorus involves you singing at the top of your voice, or at least at a level of your voice with your mouth wide open. And I don't think anybody would want to hear me sing without a mask on, but I know you definitely don't want to hear me sing with a mask on. And certainly, a lot of instruments involve respiration and blowing air into valves or wind pipes or things like that. So I don't know the answer to chorus and band. I do know that there is a statewide music teachers group that has been meeting, and at least remotely, like this. And they're coming up with ideas about how to try to preserve some sense of that. Because I do know well that for some students, that's one of the biggest reasons that they come to school. They get a lot of fulfillment and joy out of it. I know our music teachers, I know our theater production gets a lot of joy out of that. So we're going to try to find a creative way to keep that going.
Switching gears a little in the questioning here. How is our enrollment currently looking as compared to the projections in the spring? And what type of impact might that have on the budget? In addition to enrollment concerns, materials for cleaning and their costs and their availability, as well as busing?
Okay, so in terms of enrollment, I don't have an answer to the question, but I've written myself a note to follow up and find out where we currently stand. The good news is that in the very complicated education funding formula that we have in the state of Vermont, our equalized pupils are calculated by a two-year weighted average. So we will have, over the past two years, so all of our enrollment from last year at the October first count, all of the enrollment from this year at the October first count, will be put together as a weighted average. So the short answer is if we have a drop in enrollment, we could see a decrease in our equalized pupils, but it would not be, from my, it would have to be precipitous in order for it to impact a two-year weighted average. It could be felt a little bit. But it's important to know that we will, while it's a hybrid model, and I don't have the specifics for you yet, the families will be able to choose either being a part of our hybrid model or homeschooling your student. Now, there may be, there may be exceptions for people who are immunocompromised, where it might need to be entirely remote. But we are opening our building. It's not open to every single student every single day. And so for families who are considering homeschooling, that would not be being a part of our, any of our daily or remote instruction. But because we are affirmatively opening, that is the opportunity for folks to come to school. And you asked about, oh, cleaning supplies, yes. Patrick Campbell and Louisa have been our subcommittee on ordering all sorts of fun things, and we have begun that process. There will be federal money that will be available to us as a state. And then there is an application process for us as a district to apply for reimbursement for some of that, as well as, and she's not here for us to brag about, Sharma Jen Corelli, who is our director of early education, was able to find a partnership with our private providers during the emergency school dismissal. And we paid for the childcare for some of the essential workers in the town of St. Johnsberry, or if St. Johnsberry was just convenient for an essential worker in terms of their job. And so we're eligible to have that money reimbursed as well. So there will be added costs. I'm optimistic that we'll be able to defray some of them and have some of them reimbursed through some of our federal funds. We just got that application the tail end of last week, and I forwarded that to our new director of finance, Jody Oliver. And so we're chatting tomorrow, and that's one of the topics we'll discuss. Mr. Ross has already begun a conversation with Butler's Bus Company about how best to stagger our arrivals. It's important to note that while schools, according to the twenty-five-page document, the first one we got in June, have been set at stage two by the Agency of Education and the Department of Health, buses have been set at stage three. So there are no restrictions on the number of students that we can put on a bus. We're going to do that simply by not having all of our students in our building all the time, every day. And there are recommendations that we group students on the bus by cohort. And so those are some of the details that we're looking at. Mr. Ross is working with our bus company about staggering our arrivals and trying to make sure that we don't have too many students congregating in one area at one time. To give you a sense of some of the details that we are very hopeful that we're going to be able to dig into, I'll offer you two examples. One has to do with busing. The guidelines that we're following say that a student has to be screened at his or her first point of contact. For many of our students, that's the bus. So say, for example, Tom Huntington shows up to a bus stop, and one of our bus monitors puts the same thermometer to Tom's forehead as was put to all of your foreheads before you came in. Tom's temperature is right on ninety-eight point seven, is that the right, right on? Abby Campbell is next on the bus, and her temperature scan is one oh one point one. But Abby Campbell's mother is no longer at the bus stop. What does that bus monitor do? So to give you that sense, that's one of the procedures we're digging into. To give you another sense of what we dug into, it took more than four attempts, four, to put this evening together for all of you in person in this building. And that was all Patrick Campbell. We originally looked at the state guidelines and said, okay, we can have seventy-five people indoors. We figured about ten to fifteen on the stage, so there would be about sixty or so of you out there. And then Patrick Campbell came in and started measuring six feet. And he ended up with the configuration that you see here. Four meetings for one, two-hour meeting indoors in August. We are just as anxious as all of you to have our plan for hybrid instruction finalized, because then for us, the real work begins in terms of identifying the procedures that we're going to follow. Because the questions will come. What if my child has a temperature at the bus stop? What if my child has a temperature at eleven o'clock? What if my child has a temperature at two o'clock? What if we traveled over the weekend? I mean, the questions will only begin to come. So we are just as anxious as you to be able to share with you what our details are going to be.
As it relates to the timing of the plan and putting it out there, obviously, parents and the community is anxious to understand some basic logistic scheduling so that they can put, or we can all put our lives back together on the other end, on the days that we don't. So what does it look like in terms of working with the community? Obviously, schools are logistically, especially as it relates to regulations around providing childcare outside of a school setting. It would be awful hard for our school to take on that burden. But what are we doing in terms of working with our community partners and beginning that conversation to put them in the best place that they can be to be able to support our families who are going to need it?
While I haven't done it yet, and this was definitely not the mode that I was hoping to do it, I will certainly be working with our community partners to see if there's any way that any unused space in town can be used to have options for child any way that any unused space in town can be used to have options for childcare for families. It can't be something that the school endorses unless it goes through a pretty rigorous process. We have, I think, five or six private providers that are partners with us. One of the hardest things for a private childcare provider to do is to have a licensed teacher as part of their staff. That's a requirement in order to get the Act 166 tuition voucher to defray some of the costs of childcare. Several parents have reached out to me and said, there's a ton of unused space in town. Why don't you just relocate some of your classes there? I'm, I'm not able to do that based on a lot of code requirements that would bore you all to tears if I went through all of them. There are certain ADA requirements that I have to make sure are available to students that are, I know are physically available here in this building. And so, if a community group were to get together and to have a pod of families together and to work on a space together, well, I certainly could not endorse that and say, yes, this is an approved center for childcare. If families were able to work together with some of our community partners on some of the unused space in town, that certainly would be an option. And if community partners are able to do that, we would be entirely grateful.
I'll piggyback again. With that said, is there going to be consideration for families, even if they don't want to create a childcare facility, trusted family pods to either share, that are looking to share childcare responsibility or tutoring on days when their students are not in the building? Is there going to be consideration to group families with requested families?
The answer to that question is a solid, I don't know. It certainly is something that we can take into consideration. I will share for all the families that are here, a priority for us is that you not have separate cohort days for your children. So, if you have multiple children in multiple grades, Carrie Priest, who is our data manager, is working on lists in order to give us a breakdown of which days families would go to school. We are going to commit to making sure that your family would have in-person schooling and remote learning on those same days. If we're able to bridge that gap relatively well, we would certainly be open to trying to, to assist families who are podding. But I don't, I genuinely don't know the logistics of that yet. But I understand the family concern, coming from a family that's trying to do some podding myself.
So, we've been on the mic for 25 minutes. So, if we are all set with discussion of questions, one last opportunity, I'd like to get it out to the audience and the Zoom audience. So, I'll just give you one last chance, and then we'll move forward with the audience. Of course.
I was wondering if you've been in communication with teachers, and how are they feeling about the return to school? What are they excited about? What are they anxious about? And I was also wondering what supports we're providing for teachers to help them adjust their teaching and learning to this new environment?
So, I think it's safe to say, and I'm looking towards both Lydia and Jeremy, if they have anything that they want to add when I'm finished, it's safe to say our teachers are much like all of you across the board, anxious, excited, nervous, anxious, excited, nervous, desperately wanting to see their children. And then, all of the considerations that all of you have in your world, all of those teachers are sharing those as well. I mean, I had a Zoom conversation with a teacher this morning, who's worried about what this is going to look like for her own children's relationship with her parents. That once her own children start coming back to school, will she be able to reintroduce her children to her parents, who they've been able to see over the summer, because they've been socially distant and podding together? And that goes, that runs the gamut, to teachers who, and staff, who have an immunocompromised path, to teachers and staff who themselves are immunocompromised. It's, it's a range of emotions. I will say, every single adult who I've spoken to wants it to happen and is excited about it to happen, and almost often has several questions that follows. In terms of specific resources, we have offered the Vermont Virtual Learning Academy, I think it's called the Academy, and Vermont Virtual Learning, VTVLCA, as I know is the acronym. And I know Jody Elliott, who is also not here, who's our Director of Learning Design, is working hard with our interventionists to make sure, and our coaches, to make sure that we have supports and appropriate ways to help our teachers make these transitions back. Again, I think we're excited to finalize our details that will then be within the guidelines from the Agency of Education, and then dig into some more of these details to be able to support them as well.
A bit of a nitty-gritty follow-up to that, particularly as you're looking at professional development, re, you know, the sort of suggestion of removing those pods of money that were allocated for other things into more opportunities for professional development around remote learning.
So, that's a, and that's a catch-22, right? Because we have goals for ourselves in our continuous learning, uh, continuous improvement plan, that's still going to be due for us for the state of Vermont for this year. So, on the one hand, yes, I absolutely understand your thinking, and I would love to take some of that. At the same time, our title funds for the consolidated federal program grant just got approved, and unfortunately, we did not get any carve-out for using the funds for relief in terms of that. That said, I'm going to be honest, we're going to emphasize the practicality of the reopening, and we're going to emphasize supporting our teachers. And if that means we do have to divert some time or some resources, we're certainly going to do that, because the ethic of care also applies to our teachers and our staff, and the board, and all of you as a community.
All right. Thank you, Board. Brian, do you have Zoom questions in the queue already?
I do.
Okay. So, how we're going to proceed is, Brian's going to read a Zoom question right now. The microphone up here where I'm pointed, if a member of the audience, first come, first served, can come up to the microphone, then we'll be efficient.
Can you hear Patrick?
Oh, great. Perfect. Okay. So, let's start with a Zoom question, then a member of the audience can raise their hand, then Patrick will give you the mic after the Zoom question is done, first come, first served. So, Brian, I think you start with a Zoom question now, and we'll proceed.
I can, and, you know, so Patrick Campbell should be charitably called a jack-of-all-trades, because he just handed me this note that said, enrollment as of today is 610. So, we have 610, which is right within where we were last year. So, if that holds, we should see no measurable impact in our equalized pupils, which would mean no measurable change in terms, from the pupil standpoint, not from the yield, from the pupil standpoint for our budget for FY '22. First question from the Zoom came in around six or so. My question is regarding my special needs child and how to keep him safe when school is reopened. And for ish, for ish, for questions in terms of special education and in terms of 504, that will continue to, we will continue to honor both of those, that, those are non-negotiables for us. So, if a child is eligible for special education, I would expect that there will be an IEP, at least, at the very least, the special educator reaching out and connecting with the family, and building that relationship, and finding out what some of the parent concerns are, and the same with, with children who are eligible for 504. We are not absolved of our commitment to those children or those families, simply because we are going into a hybrid learning model for the beginning of the school year.
I just wanted to add to that, that I would hope that if there's a special needs student who has medical concerns that might contribute to how they integrate into the school day, that who, whichever parent asks that question, or other parents, if they want to contact their primary care office and have a conversation about that, the state and every pediatric office and family medicine office in the community very much wants to play a role in helping families do this in a safe way. So, please reach out to your primary care provider if that was the case.
Thank you.
Okay. John, you have a question?
Hey, guys. I'm John Razor. I'm a parent of three kids in the school. I'm also a family doctor at the Community Health Center. I think, what I wanted to ask about, I think it's, we got to this towards the end, but we felt like we started with talking about risk and health, all in terms of COVID-19, and not in terms of all the risk of not having in-person school. And, you know, I think what the teachers and you guys do every day, I mean, it really is life-saving in terms of just safety, in terms of preventing child abuse and neglect, and then in terms of people's long-term outcome. And I think, so people will suffer because of lack of in-person school. It just, it needs to be talked about. And then, if you read the AAP guidelines, that's a lot of what they emphasize, actually. So, I'm not saying that you're making the wrong decision, but we really do need to, that should be, that should be front and center to our thinking, both, you know, short-term and long-term, in terms of these kids' health and their, their, you know, their, their lives, their quality of lives. I, I, one, in that, in that area, one, one idea would be that there are some kids that would, are going to be hurt more by this, by not being in school every day, and some kids that would be hurt less. And there are some kids that, that are going to be exposed to more things than other kids if their parents are essential workers or have to travel. And so, are, is there room for granularity by the student? If we have, if we can put from 15, 16 kids into class, maybe there are some kids that should be there every day, if they're the kids that are going to be hurt more from being home. And maybe there's kids that, that need that less. I don't want to shoot myself in the foot by saying that, because, yeah, I might be in the latter, but my kids at least. But I, I, I hope that those are things that we're thinking about going forward.
So, is it John? I'm sorry. So, John, I want to thank you for bringing that up. I, I did in this presentation what the Agency of Education and Department of Health did in their first version of guidance. I think it's on page 19 or 20. Do you remember, do either one of you remember? On page 19 or 20 in the guidance, it says there should be a priority put on students and staff emotional and social, social-emotional health as they return to school. And I promised myself that I would not do that. And here I just did, spoke for, I don't know however long I've been speaking, and I didn't mention that. To me, education is about relationships, and there's nothing that we can do. The best lesson will not land on a child unless that child, no matter how old, by the way, no matter how old, the best lesson will not land on that child. The content will not land on that child unless that child truly believes that that adult, that person in the room cares very deeply about him or her. The number-one thing that students worry about on the first day of school every year is, will my teacher like me? And so, while I certainly failed to do that here tonight and defaulted to the science, please know that I really appreciate you giving me that feedback and reminding me, and I will not let my next presentation go this long without mentioning that. To your second point, I am hopeful that we are able to have some level of granularity. Because one of the things that was very clear to me during the emergency school dismissal, and it's not going to come as a galloping shock to anybody in this room, is that it exacerbated the inequity in our community. And it will continue to exacerbate the inequity in our community unless we, as a community, do things together outside of what we necessarily can do in this building to support all of our students. We will take those steps. And I was actually talking with Jeremy Ross just before we started about using some of our unused space. So, for, for folks to know, the cafeteria will have to be closed to all students coming in for lunch. We will either be delivering it, or students will be picking it up. We haven't, obviously, figured out the details. And the same thing with our, our gyms, our, our physical education spaces. So, we may have some spaces, we will have some spaces, to expand some of our instruction if we need to. And certainly, that's an excellent idea for feedback, to see if there's, we can take some steps to alleviate some of the inequity that we see. Thank you. I appreciate that. Oh, so Zoom, right. Second Zoom question. The only thing I've heard about over the news is that school is open. When are the specific plans for individual days going to be set? We hope to have those within the next two weeks. I didn't even discuss this with my team. I'm just putting that out there to try to help alleviate people's fears. We hope to have specifics out within the next two weeks, and we will be sharing them as soon as we do have them via our Facebook page, the email blast, phone calls, like, we plan to get that out, so that folks can have that and can start to make some of their plans, because we realize this is a stressor on families. And again, I don't want to brag about us too much, but we were, we were so close to letting you all know last Thursday exactly what we wanted to do. And then, I guess it is a good thing we got the guidance first, because it would have been worse if we said, hey, we're doing this, but no, we had to pull it back. So, thank you for your, for your understanding.
My name's Ashley Black. I actually will have four students in the school this year, and also a member of the PTO. This is kind of a difficult question, more medically, but it's been on my mind throughout the community the whole time. People have not really been educated in mask-wearing. Again, retired paramedics, so I see a lot of people in the public wearing the standard PPE medical mask that are not good for long periods of time. As I sit here and sweat and mine, I think, are we going to educate the parents and the students in mask-wearing? How many times have I been at the grocery store and see people pull their mask out of their pocketbooks or out of their cars, never being washed, never being cleaned, and they're, then they're contaminated? So, I know kids produce a lot more respiratory droplets and sneezing and things like that, so there's going to be a lot more chance for germs. Again, it may be impossible, but I just thought maybe we could educate the families?
So, that's a really great question. We don't have any specific plans to educate beyond the community, but certainly, we will be educating our community about that, the school community. Again, I let off, and it looks like Dana Gray has already left, I let off by saying how grateful I was to read in the CalRec last week that they're telling everybody to wear a mask. Again, I, I, and I, I won't get into it. I recognize that it's become a partisan issue for some, but I, I rest with the science. You know, I mean, there's no, there's at least three doctors that I know of that are sitting here, one's in the audience, two are, are at the front tables. And candidly, it will be an expectation if, for all adults and for all students, unless there's a behavioral or developmental reason why a student can't wear a mask.
My name's Dean Rankin. I'm actually near-nose and throat, but what you're really trying to do with the mask is prevent the major droplets, the micro-droplets are going to penetrate. You're absolutely right. There was a study that just came out today that actually showed that it actually is protective to the wearer as well, and that the chance of developing symptoms if you're exposed to COVID drops significantly just by wearing the mask. So, I, I think your point is well-taken. I think that they're probably, I don't know if we could put this on the website, you know, just to, I'm sure there's an instructional out there on YouTube that you could find as to how to wear a mask, but potentially linking that into our website might be something that's valuable.
Thanks for bringing this up, Ashley. There actually is a link on the nurses' website from the AAP about, you know, encouraging children to wear masks and, and teaching them how to wear them correctly, modeling for them, and getting them ready for school. But your point is well-taken. There is a lot of information that adults need to learn about proper mask care as well.
The next question on Zoom is around students who are on IEPs or 504s. I think I've answered that already. And for families that are still with, with substantive questions, during the summer, you should feel welcome to reach out to either your child's co-principal and/or Carol Lufkin, who is our Director of Student Support Services, who's not here tonight, but she is on virtually. And then, certainly, as the school year begins, a new, reaching out to your child's special educator would be able to answer those questions. So, I'm going to keep going down. How will the grading be done appropriately? That's a great question, and I, I don't have a, a great answer to that yet, because we haven't had that discussion. And one of the things that I do want to mention, I think, is that Carl Johnson in the back? I can't tell, because he has his mask on. Carl Johnson is one of our middle school educators, and he's also the co-president of the St. Johnsbury Teachers Association. And one of the things that has really kept me coming back, and, and definitely was a huge reason why I wanted to be the full-time superintendent after your part-time work, is the relationship that I have with Carl Johnson and the teachers, and the great relationship that both Jeremy and Lydia have with the local association folks here in the building. There's a lot of statewide rhetoric right now about the decision by the AOE and the governor not to have a further commission around working with the Formal Teachers Union on reopening steps. Carl and I, since last year, have had an open door, and now to this point, an open phone call conversation and standard with each phone call conversation and standard with each other. If there's something that I think is really super important, I'm welcome to call Carl's professional cellphone at any time, and he feels the same with me. So in order to answer, answer that question well, I'm not in a position to do it. I want to work with our teachers on that. And so while I don't have a good answer to that, it goes a long way to say, I'm really proud of the work that we've done with Carl and Ashley so far. Ashley Whitehill is the other co-president of the association, and we are in weekly communication with them around this and around the work that we are doing, and we expect to do that as we continue to move forward. So for whoever asked that question, I'm sorry, I don't have a good answer yet, but I am very confident because we have a great relationship, and specifically Jeremy and Lydia have great relationships with our teachers, that we're going to come up with a really great answer to that question before too long.
Hi, I'm Simon Fisher. I have one student in this school at this point. First off, I just, I want to say that I appreciate what you just said, Dr. Rika, and your question earlier, Eileen, about supporting the staff. I understand why most of the conversation, both nationally and statewide, has been about focusing on keeping the students safe, obviously. That's the first priority of any school. But I've also been really frustrated that there hasn't been more conversation about how to keep the adults in the building safe. I don't want my son to get sick. I don't want his teacher to get sick, or his bus driver, or the person that serves him lunch, right? So it, it, it all matters, and it all needs to stay at the forefront. So I, I'm happy to hear that you're having those discussions, and I, I hope that the concerns of the teachers and the staff remain at the forefront. Couple of questions that I had. One is about the hybrid model. Is it, has it been decided that it's going to be alternating days? Because there was, there was some talk at one point about half-days.
I can share with you, there will be no, we've decided against half-days.
Okay, good. Not only would that not really work for my kid, I don't think any educator feels like a half-day is very productive in most situations, whether it's for in-service or snow days or whatever else. Is there information yet about when someone is going to be required to get a COVID test?
So I'm going to defer to Louisa on that. I don't think we have it yet. Is it yet? We haven't determined, so there will be, the answer is no, but we will have procedures for that. Part of what we have to come up with is how we're going to instruct not only our families, but as you mentioned, our teachers, and ultimately all of the people who come to this building, what the expectations will be when it's appropriate. Do you want to add something to that, Louisa?
Yeah, that's a great question and complex. So it depends on the clinical scenario. So an adult, faculty member, employee, student who shows clinical symptoms, they should get in touch with their primary care provider generally. If they didn't have one, then there should be some other route to get them tested. But they would probably get tested as quickly as possible, so any symptomatic person. And I don't think the expectation that they would be, would be that they'd be tested in the school, although hopefully within the community in some organized way. Initially, if it's sporadic, that would be through primary care contact. If there's an outbreak, which hopefully we do not have, and if you've been following what's happening in the state, the Department of Health jumps in and does a lot of testing. So that would be based upon contact tracing. And then the, the next scenario, although there are probably many iterations to the possibilities, is a contact, a close contact from a positive case. And in that situation, it has to do with a few different possibilities. One would be, they would, that individual would probably have to be out of school, and then they'd be tested on day seven if they're asymptomatic, or they could have an entire 14-day quarantine before they come back to care without testing. And again, there's some complexity to that, but those are a few of the scenarios.
Next question. If some Vermont schools are offering daily in-person instruction and St. John'sbury School District is not, there is clear inequity. How will we compensate for that inequity? Individual tutors, access to the Vermont Virtual Learning, anything? So that, there's two things there. Number one, I'm only responsible ultimately for the young people and adults that are here. As I mentioned at the start of X, we have over, we have 610 enrolled as of today, and we have 170 staff members, and we filled all positions. There weren't a ton of them that were vacant. So my quick math tells me that's 780 people if we're all here on a given day. I can only speak for what we're doing here, and based on all of the public health guidance and all of the science that we've reviewed as a reopening task force, we would not be able to mitigate the risk appropriately. Some of my colleague superintendents in the area have some very, very small elementary schools, and they're able to reopen and keep all of the six feet and keep all of the physical distance and maintain the guidelines that are set forth in the Agency of Education reopening document. So again, and I, and I know that some of my colleagues are struggling with what to do at their high schools. So I feel very fortunate that we're, we're able to make that decision here. And, and I should point out, that was not my decision, that was a group decision. The reopening task force decided that it would not be safe based on the guidelines. So how to compensate for that inequity? We're, we're going to be having remote learning. I, I, again, I'm going to rely on the professionalism of our teachers, that while it's not going to be the exact same as in-person, we're going to do everything we can, certainly within those four themes of more feedback, of making sure we email assignments, of recommending more video lessons, and actually this time grading and evaluating our students, that it's going to be a different and better experience than it was during emergency remote teaching. So I'm hopeful that that's at least an attempt, but we're not, we are not able to compensate families in the way that this person is questioning.
Thank you. My name's Jansen Willhite. I have four children currently in the St. John'sbury School. But I do kind of feedback off of that and also what was talked about, some of the inequities. I came to the day not only for myself, but also from the foster and adoptive parent community, because as some of you know, all my children, because one has graduated from here, are, are all adopted in our community. And the concern that, that we have, even in the hybrid model, is to be frank, it's not going to work for us. As you might expect, like in my family, but I'm not unique in this, most of our foster and adoptive families are essential workers. And so like my wife's a social worker, I'm a public defender, we already have had to work for a long time now. And so there's, there's no way for our four kids that we're going to be able to teach them during the day. And then our childcare provider, who's also our neighbor who's here, we have a wonderful childcare, Play Street Daycare, they have to go by these same guidelines. So they don't, they're not going to have the space either than to have a bunch of extra kids there those other days, and certainly aren't equipped to teach kids. And again, going back to my, my kids, they're not, not unique to me, but two of our four are on pretty significant IEPs. The other two, fortunately, they're not, they're still very young, but also their, their trauma histories are horrendous. And so they, they need in-person education, they just do. And so I really implore everyone here to, to remember that, because we have kids, and again, my four are the only ones. I would, I would venture to say there's probably at least a quarter of your, of, of our cla, of our classrooms are similar to the kids that, that are my children now, that need that. If they don't have that, they are going to fall behind. And, and I, I'm horribly concerned for, for our children.
Thank you for your feedback. And as I said, I, I hope that we can address some of those concerns. Next Zoom question. Did you consider the AOE's follow-up Safe Start FAQ that indicated six feet was a guideline and not a requirement? What distance? I think that question got cut off. We did. And one of the things that we started off this conversation by saying is, we're, we're using the guidelines from the AOE as our foundation. So yes, there are, there is room within that, but for me and for the reopening task force, that was not a risk that we were willing to take, not only for our students, but also for our adults. And so we're, well, certainly there may be schools out there that are making that choice. We have chosen, at least for the opening of school, we have chosen to go with the six feet, which is what is recommended, that is best practice, and we have chosen to go with the mask. I do know that there was an FAQ that went out that said, yes, it is a guideline and not a requirement. But I also don't want to start getting into parsing language that puts people more at risk. And I understand that there are risks on both sides, because this gentleman who just spoke, talked about the risk for his children staying at home. And, and I, I think while we are certainly coming from an ethic of care, we're going to struggle to meet every single person's needs as if school is reopening normally until school can reopen normally. And so it is my hope, even though John isn't here anymore, that we can also follow up to this gentleman's comment, that we can find some extra wiggle room, potentially for students who we've identified as really at risk based on their profile and based on who they are.
Hi, Joy Ely. I have one child left here. I've had two graduate already. I'm struggling with a statement that you made around not seeing a huge growth in students like we have seen in the past that you made earlier.
Can you say it again? I didn't hear what I.
That we may not see a huge growth in our students academically like we have in the past. I struggle with that statement because it's your job to make sure my children grow. So I'm wondering if there has been any conversation around cohorts of parents being able to tuition students out to the Vermont Learning, the Vermont Virtual Learning Community. My oldest daughter, when her academic, when her academics weren't being met, was tuitioned out to that program. So I'm wondering if that is an option and how to go about requesting that, so parents could co-develop cohorts around that and maybe lessen some of the load as well. And then I'm just curious if IXL and Khan Academy will be used as a basis for educating our students during days that they're not in school, because that was not a great experience for students.
So thank you. Good question. I have not had a discussion, we have not had a discussion around tuitioning out. If that were to be the case, that would have to be a board decision, because the current policy is for tuitioning, as I understand, high school students. But I'm happy to offer the board to take that under consideration for a future board meeting if we would be interested in tuitioning students out who are currently resident students in our KE building. And we don't, unfortunately, Joy, have any specifics about what the, what the remote learning is going to look like. So I mean, we can certainly take that feedback, but we don't, we don't have any specifics yet from, from our end as to what that will be.
Have teachers begun to develop their virtual learning at home and getting prepared for that, because that's such a huge process and it's a huge undertaking, and to be able to teach in the school and as well as at home is a really big, so I'm wondering what that's looked like as well to kind of set some of my concerns at ease, maybe?
So Mr. Ross and Ms. Cochran reached out to the teachers just after I communicated with the board that we were going to be going to a hybrid model, and they've been meeting with teachers regularly around that. So I feel safe to say that the work has begun, but I don't have any specifics. I don't know if either Jeremy or Lydia wants to, to speak to that further, but I do know that the teachers are aware of our decision and they have started working on it. I mean, we, at the very last Zoom fireside chat that Mr. Ross hosted, we, we said that school might not look like it was going to look in the fall as, as we would normally hope that it would. And I know that while not contractually required, I think that's Jimmy Darden right there, although I'm not 100% sure, and it is. These masks thing do a terrible, terrible thing to try and recognize humans. I feel safe to say that our professionals have already been given this a substantial, a lot of thought, and that the email that they got from Mr. Ross and Ms. Cochran confirmed something that they were worried about, but had already made substantial plans on. I lost track here. We did, so there's another question around consideration given to the guidance that it's a recommendation and not a requirement to be six feet, so that was answered. What type of professional development will the teachers be involved in in order to best teach this hybrid model? We don't have a specific answer to that yet, except that we know that our Director of Learning Design and our interventionists and coaches will be working with our teachers to try to move that professional development forward. And of course, to Abby's question about diverting some funds, if we're in need and we have to divert some funds, we would be happy to make that reasonably appropriate for our teachers. That's all the Zoom questions I have. That's right, you did. Sorry.
I'm Skandar Rashid. I have.
Sorry, Dr. Rika. No, it's your, your turn.
I have two children, one is in 11th grade at the academy and one is coming into sixth year. This is a pandemic we're going through. It's a national emergency, something I have never experienced in my life, something no one has experienced in their life. Apprehension is there, anxiety is there, but what matters most is the growth of children is not just the text. I, I'm an old principal educator. It's not about assessment as we know assessment. What it is about is, do they understand what you just said about it is not social distancing, it's just physical distancing for the safety that the healthcare people are telling us about? I mean, if we can teach our children those things, I believe we've taught them a lot. So that's my general statement, and I feel very confident that this school will pull it through. We've been here seven, eight years, and I love having my children go through this school. So my question is this. St. John's Academy just put out a schedule that they will be meeting students every other day, green and white. So my older son will go to school every other day. It'll be awesome if I could, if we could piggyback with this school on that, so that during home day, it's instructional time for both kids, vice versa. I won't take too much of the time, but if I can help in any way with that, I'll be happy to. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do appreciate that. For a while, we had the new headmaster, Dr. Howell, on our Zoom chat, or Zoom meeting, and I have a conversation with her tomorrow, I believe. You know, much like the pod question, I think we're going to do everything we can to try to make it reasonable for folks, and we recognize that you're not the only one who has a child at the academy and here, and that that would really work out well for your family. So we will certainly add that into the mix. Thank you for your kind words as well. So a question came in. Based on the school's concern for equity and access to learning resources, how can parents that feel they have the time, energy, and resources to give engage to support other families to get their home learning environment dialed in, in such as internet access, resources, scheduling, parental check-ins, and support? All of those elements that come into play for home learning environments. I do not want to fear of a lack of equity to hold back forward progress for all students. We're all in this together, and I will make time to engage with other families that need assistance gaining their footing. I think just that. I think other parents reaching out either on our Facebook page or through your communities or through members of the board, or just having conversations like this to try to figure out a way to support each other is, is the best way to do it. Again, for, and I hate to say it, for legal reasons, I can't sanction one of those, but I would be happy to facilitate those conversations if there's something that I can do to help that happen. I said it earlier, the community itself will help see us through this. We, we can't do this on our own. I've never thought I was cool enough. This, as you just said, sir, is something I've never faced as a human being, let alone as a husband or a father or a superintendent. I always rely on my team, now more than ever. I really, we are moving through decisions by consensus, not by fiat. So if there can be community members that can help to organize this, if there's anything that we can do on our end as a school to help that, please let us know, because we're, we're not going to be able to do it all by ourselves.
Hi, so I have three kids that are a part of this school district, two of which are both very young. So my concern isn't so much from the remote standpoint, but from the when they're physically here standpoint, what kind of discussion has there been about what the in-classroom learning is going to look like for the pre-K and kindergarten area where we all know that where we all know that those kids are not going to wear their masks? They're going to chew on them, stick them up their noses, fling them at people? You know, and social distancing? Forget it. They don't grasp that concept at all, nor are they interested, nor is that how they learn. I mean, that age group learns by touching, feeling, licking, playing with, tasting. So how do we get them to be able to grow while encouraging all of these requirements that have been put on us as a society?
Very carefully and deliberately. I don't have a good answer, except that I'm going to absolutely rely on our Director of Early Education, Shama Jen Correlli, and our pre-K and K team. I mean, I, the last time I was a full-time teacher was in the 2001, 2002 school year and I was a first-grade teacher. And I distinctly remember on my first day of school, when those little people walked into my room, I recognized right away that they were just kindergartners who had had two months off. And so absolutely, everything that you described happened every day in my classroom. And I also know that we did get to a place, at least in my classroom. And so I feel confident saying that Ms. Cochran's lower school is going to be able to get there as well. We did get to a place where there was a modicum of understanding of the rules. And I think I'm going to also rely on this gentleman's comment that we're going to look for growth in other places than just, you know, our standard assessments. But I truly, I don't have a great, I don't have a great answer, except to say I know our pre-K and kindergarten teachers are already having these conversations. Ms. Cochran, do you want to add to that in any way?
I have a certain degree to start with. They're definitely thinking about it already and are starting to come up with some really creative ideas. And with the help of the different cohorts and our school counselors and our school nurses, just, you know, having those conversations that how do we encourage play when they can't actually play next to each other? How do they learn how to share when they all have their own supplies? And all I can say right now is that they're getting really creative about it. And I look forward to seeing kind of where they go with it. But it is like, it is one of their number one concerns at the moment, so. We'll find out. I feel, you know, coming from middle school, I was in middle school and then came to pre-k at third grade and I'm learning the joys of younger kids all the time. And that's what it is. They touch things, they throw things, you know, like, they're so tactile. So we'll have to find joy in learning in different places this year.
Right.
Can I also say just that daycare has been doing this for the last five months? And I think that one of the things that the Department of Health has really looked at is that there's been, for lack of a better word, kind of experimenting on this, that kids are interacting with other small kids. We do know that, number one, it's really important to pay attention to how kids interact appropriately and develop mentally. Kids do follow the lead of adults. One of the things that's really important in this conversation is that we all model for young kids, how we talk about keeping safe and staying healthy. And honestly, if you look at the research, adults are the ones who are carrying the disease and giving it to other adults. Young kids actually statistically are low risk. Now, that doesn't mean no risk, but the American Academy of Pediatrics and the family medicine organization in the country really have promoted having young kids come back to school for the great strength of being in school and how kids learn. So there is some precedent already out there in the state for how this is working. And it's a complex question, but I think the most important one being that modeling piece of kind of us as adults showing them that this is an important thing. And it can be a positive thing and a creative way of dealing with it.
So it was just brought to my attention that there are questions on the YouTube channel as well. There are a few that are repeats, so I'm not going to go through those. There was a question, can you please repeat the date you expect to decide what the hybrid model will look like? We expect to share that within the next two weeks to the entire school community. The question is, K3 need basics to move forward. Hybrid might work for older kids, but if we don't get the basics in for younger kids, how are they able to move forward? We're planning on still having a hybrid model and with some in-person instruction and some remote instruction helping our students move forward even in K3. I think, I think we can all, no one rises to low expectations. And I certainly will say, as a first-grade teacher, a lot of my work that year surprised me even. And so I, piggybacking off of this conversation here, I have a great deal of respect for our early childhood team and our lower school team. And I know we're going to get this right. As homeschooling is challenging and parents rely heavily on teachers, could these teachers give parents individualized assistance and guidelines in being more participative in the learning process? That's certainly a great question and I'm going to not note that down for our conversation around remote learning. One of the things that we did hear specifically from parents was to make sure that assignments are emailed to them as well. And so I mentioned that earlier, that's something that we're definitely going to do. How is the lunch in U-Arts going to work in this weird model? That's a great question. Right now, the plan is to have lunch delivered to our classrooms. But again, we don't know the specifics of that yet and that could potentially change. And we don't have a solid idea about what are U-Arts folks are going to do yet. But we're looking on the creative side of things to try to make sure. And it's certainly not something we're giving up on. I mean, I know I sort of joked a little bit earlier about the emphasis on math and literacy in terms of social studies and science. We are not giving up on our U-Arts. We are still going forward with our, with our full curriculum. And we're still going to have that as part of our school day. Surrounding towns are opening-- oh, why can't we, I had addressed that earlier. My concern is children whom receive services will be at complete disadvantages. This is not going to help our students. If there are federal funds, how about hiring tutors to help the children? I don't think at this point that we're in need of tutors for our school community, but we would certainly be open to that if that was something that the leadership team thought would benefit our students. Are you planning to schedule children who are in a family to be on the same day? Yes. For those exempt from wearing a mask for health behavioral reasons, what steps will be taken to protect others around them? I would say that's going to be a very, very small number of children and I would work with our health providers around that. And we would iron that out procedurally on this end. Do you want to add anything to that, Louisa?
So the guidelines indicate that masks need to be worn when developmentally appropriate. So our preschool children will not be required to wear masks. And, you know, for children who are drooling or chewing on their masks, they wouldn't be required to wear masks as well. So they, this in behavioral issues will be considered. So that for older students, it will be decided on a case-by-case basis.
That is it for the YouTube questions and that is it for the-- although Patrick Ely said he asked a question on Zoom. Patrick, if you could put your question in either the Zoom or back into YouTube, I'll be happy to try to answer it. I did want to add something. I'm just looking at my notes here. We did ask all of our families to respond to that survey just about the hybrid situation in general and we threw out some options. I will say, almost 300 people participated. It's the largest survey response I've got since I've started working here and serving with all of you. And so I'm grateful. Of the 395, the most, the response in terms of a model that got the most feedback, positive feedback, was two days on and two days off. That received 51. I know it wasn't an overwhelming amount. That got 51. Half-day got 42. But I've shared with all of you that we're not going to go with a half-day model. Logistically, we just couldn't figure it out. A weekly rotation got 24. An A/B only rotation got 18 and a half, and that was the half-day for 42. So we've informed, we've allowed that information to inform our decision as we go forward. So that's all I have right now on YouTube and/or Zoom.
I just wanted to echo Dr. Josh around the daycares in the area. They've been doing a phenomenal job in the students, you know, the kids going there and how they're being really creative around that. So being able to go out and see that and talk with them, I think will provide a lot of support to the questions that you were asking as well. I'm curious about subs. What happens if somebody becomes sick? What happens if a teacher becomes ill or their children become ill? Are subs going to be coming in from the outside community? What does that look like? I know subs are hard to get in general. I know other schools in our area have made pretty clear, you know, statements around subs. So I'm just curious what your thought process is on that.
Yeah, that's definitely a question we've been wrestling with, with my regional superintendent group. We often share subs and we don't have a good answer at this point. You know, I think, and typically what we would do here, as in any building, is if, you know, Mark Avery is teaching in Room A and Eileen Dickinson is teaching in Room B. And if Mark is absent and Eileen has the capability, she would just slide right over and take over his class. That would kind of ruin the podding system. So it's really something that we have to give a lot of thought to, that we don't have ironed out quite yet. So here's the question. The AOE guidance document suggests that parents have some choice in participating in a hybrid model. Do they? I don't think, I don't think that's how we are interpreting it. We are opening our school in a hybrid model. I will certainly follow up with the agency on that. The document also says the consideration must be made, including the process for parents to sign up and discontinue participation in the hybrid learning. As I read that, that would be a parent that is considering not having their student enrolled anymore as a student here, but would be choosing to do homeschooling. That was also in my notes. I wanted to make sure that I brought up. You are absolutely welcome to homeschool your child if you feel as though this is not the right environment for your child right now. And I absolutely understand that. If you do choose to do that, there is a page on the Vermont Agency of Education website that takes you through steps to have an approved homeschool plan. It should be noted that any homeschooling plan is a relationship only between the family and the agency of education. I, the school has no, no part in that plan, except to verify. I get an email with a list of students every month to verify that they are still residents of the St. Johnsberry School District and that they are on the homeschool plan. And we compare that against the list that we have. So I think, but Mr. Ely, I'll certainly double-check. I think that's the, that's the direction the Agency of Education was going in. But I'll make a note of that and follow-up.
I'm Sarah Willey. I have a fifth-grade student in the school and I'm the current CATCH program director. My question is about equity and safety, specifically around what support and resources a school is providing for families who don't have internet access or are working phones? And as well as what the protocol is for how long a family is disconnected before somebody is physically checking on that child?
So those are great questions. I don't have the specific, we don't have the specific procedures yet. I can tell you what we did during the emergency school dismissal was we used anything that we could to get in touch with any child that we weren't hearing from. And we will certainly do that again. I will tell you that Carrie Priest is working with our rep from the NEK Supes Group in terms of actually mapping physical locations that broadband access is lacking in St. Johnsberry, per our data. I don't expect that it'll be resolved by the time school starts in late August. But that will certainly be taken into account as we make our plans to go forward. We will have solid plans for families that are unable to connect to internet and are unable to receive phone calls. We will find a way to reach every single child in our district so that we are able to record them as being, attending school if they are part of our remote learning environment. Thank you for raising a really good question.
Sorry, this is Jansen Wong again. So I have a follow-up on the discussion that was in earlier with the doctor with respect to the children and then also the discussions with the little kids and the spacing and getting them all comfortable. Again, I'm sorry, my lens again of being a fostered adult parent comes up because two of our kids that are in this school, we have been in, what's it called now? Attachment therapy, sorry. Attachment therapy for over four years. Because one of them was never held as a child. They, the bio-parents put the bottle at the side, had to feed it. I mean, like, I mean, so it took so long for him to attach to anyone. Now he does. It's, and actually it's kind of like, and Dr. Tru, you understand this, like, the opposite now. Because we've worked on it so hard, how he knows he's loved is to be touched, to be loved on-- there's no way he's going to connect with anyone. Also, the fact that we're at work, so we can't be on a video. But on a video, he's just not. So I'm sorry I kept echoing it, but you said that you hope, and sorry, my wife responded when I got the last answer. And I understand, but she was upset too. She's like, well, we hope we can accommodate the best we can. It's not a good answer for our family. These kids have been through so much and they have to have real education. And if you can't, then to be frank, this whole board's going to have to think about options for our kids to be able to be sent to other schools where they can be loved on. Thank you.
We understand your question and we, we'll address it with the administration.
So a couple more questions have come in. Will Friday be a full online, will Friday be full day online with full class? This past end of the year with limited access to teachers during online learning, it lacked. Will the fifth day be an online teaching day? I don't have an answer to the question yet. It's certainly a part of our conversation. Will the school let us take tuition dollars elsewhere for other educational opportunities if the St. John's School cannot offer it? And again, to an earlier question about tuition dollars out, that would have to be a board decision. So I will certainly pass that along to the board for their consideration.
Hi, I'm Terri Lovely. I had a son that attended middle school here and my daughter is entering the fourth grade. Mine's more of a statement than a question. I just want to say I was lucky to have Jen Taylor as Maddie's third-grade teacher because she was very accommodating to whatever Madeline's needs were because we were all in a flux and we didn't know. And screen time's too much for her. And I'm just reading through my notes of, you know, the screen time of having your child on the screen for four-plus hours a day. That's what we were doing with Google Classroom. It doesn't work for little kids. It doesn't work for most kids. There's research that shows it's not mentally healthy and developmentally healthy for kids to be on screen. And then I'm looking at the in-classroom staring at the back of your peers' heads. And I just want to say that you guys are charged with very hard decisions and I appreciate all the hard work you're putting in this. But when you keep saying physical distancing, I need to reiterate that 70% of communication is physical. And the mental health ramifications of the decisions we're making today are going to impact our kids and us and our teachers for the rest of our lives. We need to know that. And instead of treating this as a mental, physical health, can we just please start looking at it as a whole health issue? This is not just a physical health issue. The decisions we're making are going to affect our children's mental health for the rest of their lives.
I do just want to be clear, we're not going with the option for rows. That's, we were considering reopening in full and that was how we were going to be able to do it, was to have students in rows all day. And we decided as a reopening task force that that was not in our children's best interest. And to your point about screen time, we certainly hear that as well. And it is our hope that there is independent application without screens that can, that can happen as well. But we also recognize that comes with some risks, like what if a child needs support in doing that? So I really appreciate your candid and honest feedback and your statement. So thank you very much.
I'm wondering if you've explored looking into maybe videoing within the classroom, live broadcasting? So when kids are in class one day and they're out of class the other day, then they could actually still be in the lesson. They could still be interacting with kids in the classroom, teachers within the classroom. They're not going to be behind on the academic piece of that and what that might look like, where somebody might be able to broadcast it on a smart TV, for example, rather than on a small Chromebook that's in front of them. And then also thinking about that technology piece, is that-- And then also thinking about that technology piece, is that going to be traveling back and forth with kids, back and forth to school? What does that look like? What if one breaks? How does that all play out?
So we have, as part of our discussion has been live videos, that kind of thing. We've, we really have not ruled anything out in terms of what remote learning will look like. And sounding like a broken record, once we know our hybrid model, we'll be able to make these type of decisions in terms of technology as well. But we certainly expect technology to be a part of our students' lives, and we want to make sure that it lives in, at least it's appropriate and it's safe.
Can I speak to the younger kid question again? Is that okay? So I just wanted to address your specific question about your kids and the complexity of that situation. If you look at the AAP recommendations, it actually has some flexibility in the preschool, kindergarten age in terms of discussing physical distancing and the appropriate approach to kids based upon their developmental and trauma-informed history. So just to be very clear, and I'm not going to speak for the school, but in terms of the national thinking about this, it does not envision small children six feet apart in little pods not having that loving interaction with their teachers. And I think it's important to recognize that that is a specialized group, and I don't know what the school is going through in that process, but I think that that's part of the conversation. And I don't think anyone who knows kids thinks that that would be appropriate for early education. And that is informed by the research. So we really know that younger kids are not likely to be the ones that are spreading disease frequently, how, which may allow us to have more contact or closer physical spacing. But it also means that we as adults have to follow through on what we need to do, meaning if you have a whole bunch of kids in closer proximity in daycare or in school, it may mean you can't then visit the grandparents who are 85 years old, because there may be vectors of disease that are important. So I think that what we're recognizing around the country is that it's really important for us to take responsibility for how we interact, not only in schools but outside of that. And that may be some of that trade-off that we really need to focus on for the health of young kids.
Two more questions came in on the Zoom, or excuse me, on YouTube. In past board meetings, we discussed that the middle school did not have a dedicated science curriculum, but was using standards as the curriculum. Do we now have a middle school science curriculum? I would ask Mr. Ely that you connect with Jody Elliott about that, I don't have the specifics to that in front of me. The next question says, no matter the model, there will be five instruction days per week? Correct. And that is correct. We will have, we will be connecting with our students, whether remote or in person, five days a week. We're not elongating our school year by having four instructional days and one day that's not either remote or in person. We will have five instructional days per week during the school year.
Hi, so I'm just wondering, we've been talking about like the symptoms of COVID, and we've talked about testing a little bit, but that being said, the fact that some of the symptoms are so very similar to many other viruses that are often present in schools, what, like, what kind of discussions have been around that and what that's going to look like for our children being able to attend or being sent home? You know, I mean, clearly, obviously, a fever, but, you know, your kid gets a sore throat, and they have strep throat, or they've got the common cold, and they've got a cough. I worry that everybody's going to jump to conclusions and panic and think COVID, and then next thing we know, all our kids are going to be at home again.
So I'm going to turn to one of our medical professionals to help us parse that. I think as Patrick's bringing over a microphone to Luisa, I think we, I think, I appreciated Dr. Josh's response that we have a responsibility as adults in terms of all of us making sure here in the school building, we're taking precautions. I think we have to, as adults, be ready for the fact that there may be incidents and outbreaks in our school building and in our community. I think to be, to prepare ourselves so that when it happens, we can be ready to talk to our kids about it appropriately, I think is, is a professional responsibility that we'll have as educators, but I think it extends to all of us as a community, that we, that we recognize certainly as the number of days that we can be outdoors a lot dwindles, that our chances of mitigating the risk get a little harder. Luisa?
That is a valid concern, because a lot of the symptoms of COVID are similar to other viruses. So we are putting together guidelines for parents about when to keep sick children home and when children will be sent home, and we'll be working closely with parents and their providers to determine a plan of care. But you're right, that, that's something we're not going to be able to figure out at school, so sick children will have to go home. That being said, you know, for children who have allergies and asthma, we, you know, if a child has asthma and they're coughing in the classroom, they're not going to be sent home if it can be treated with their inhaler. But it is, it is going to look different this year.
I will say the Department of Health discussion was today from 12:15 to 1:00 was entirely about your question. Two infectious disease specialists who specialize in pediatric care were talking, and then multiple providers around the state. And the honest answer is it's a great question, and you're right that COVID-19 looks like a lot of other viruses. So the general consensus is that we're going to have to be conservative at first, and really consider the majority of diseases that look like possible COVID-19 as reasons not to come to school. And that will include a cough, specifically a fever, feeling flu-like, which is a really important one, muscle aches and pains, feeling chilled, you know, you wake up with your kid and wow, your kid just doesn't look like your kid. We need to take that seriously. Very mild, light, runny nose, and possibly history of allergies, that kid probably come to school. And then, you know, there are a lot of other typical things, but that is going to have to be a conversation with your primary care provider to a certain degree, and then the school will have to be pretty conservative about limiting kids with acute onset of illness.
I don't want to speak too much, but I just felt like, as I was sitting here, everybody in this room has had valid questions, and everyone on YouTube and Zoom, but I didn't want to leave here without a positive note for myself personally, because this country alone, let alone all the other countries, have educated children through the Great Depression, through wars, through segregation, and many, many other things, and I just want you guys to know that we support you, and you're doing a fantastic job. Nobody's been through this, this is new, but we've been through other things, and we got through it. So as long as we keep a positive attitude, encourage one another, and support one another, our kids are going to be fine. We just have to believe that. So I just didn't want to leave here because I felt like we need more positive statements, so anyway.
Well, I think that is wrapping up the questions, so I want to sincerely thank you, community members, both here, in, on YouTube and on Zoom. I've been on school boards for about 12 years now, and it's not often we get this much participation in the public, so I truly, truly appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Can I say one thing before we go to the next topic?
Of course.
I wouldn't be a good educator if I didn't send you all home, whether you're here in person or on via technology. If you are a parent of a child who goes to school here, there's two things I would like you to please do. Well, actually, I'm going to take a page out of your book, three things I would like you to do. One, keep a positive attitude about this. Come vent to me, come vent to the adults that are in your world, come, what, I will make, I will make myself available so that you can absolutely vent all your frustrations about this. So keep a positive attitude for your children. Two, please, if your children don't already have one, get them a mask. Let them start to learn how to keep the mask on for periods of time. Three, if you don't already have one in your home, please get a good working thermometer, because we're working on a procedure that would probably allow some families, if they are able to, we'll still have a bus monitor, to have an entrance slip that answers all of the questions that Luisa asked you, or one of our other nurses asked you before you came in, as well as validating your child's temperature. So we have, we have some ideas to try to make this a little bit more palatable for everybody, but we really need your help. And again, could you remind me of your name, please? Ashley. The positive part, save all the negativity, you know it, for me. I won't even say any other member of the staff. Save the negativity for me. I would be happy to take it and listen to it, because chances are I'm feeling the same anxiety about my own kid's education, and I'd be happy to connect with you as a human being about that. But let's stay positive like Ashley suggested. Please start having your child practice wearing a mask, and please have a working temperature or thermometer at home.
Thank you. So I want to move on to our next topic, a board retreat. So I'd like to offer to the board, in lieu of us canceling the board retreat later this week, the date of August 31st, which was a scheduled board meeting for our board retreat, as I think it's important to keep going forward with our goals and not put them off for a year. So I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Is that on Monday?
Yes.
Do I need to stick a little bit?
Yes. So Monday at 6 o'clock, location to be determined.
Works for me. It works for me.
It's booked, August 31st. I will touch base with you with the location.
I just want to have one comment regarding that, and that's sort of a commitment that I want to make as a board member, is that we don't just, we do what we can to get out of emergency mode and move forward with the proactive work that we came on this board, that I came on this board to do, a strategic plan. And the important things that I wanted to be able to do from this year, obviously have had to take a step behind the health and safety of our community and of our children, but that, we're not going to forget the important work and the important questions that we as a community need to do to hold our kids and our educators to the feet of the fire so that we are providing quality education to our children outside of this pandemic. It's not, it's, there's going to be a lot of questions and a lot of situations that in the past schools been, that we as a school, that the school's been able to provide to families, that I have, I fear is going to have to change, and we're going to have to look at new ways as a community to provide those important services to our families that need it. So on the note of the board retreat and the important work moving forward, that I am still, as a board member, committed to having those important discussions and creating plans moving forward.
Great, thank you. Yes?
Can I just ask, is the board retreat open to the public?
It is.
Our school board meeting is going to be continued through Zoom? I think this is great to be able to get people's input and be able to continue to be part of this process and ask tough questions and be part of solutions and support the work that, you know, you guys are doing and that the teachers are trying to figure out as well. So I'm just wondering how that gets posted, or where we can find that information?
You will find it on our website. It'll be posted like any other meeting, so it is a public session, the board retreat. It is my desire to have board meetings live rather than in Zoom, but we will certainly keep Zoom open as an option, just as we did tonight, for any participating members of the public. All right, so we have no action items this evening to vote on, so we move on to public comment. I do have a letter to read in public comment, I wrote my glasses. It is my requirement to read these letters word for word, so I will do that. I just need to pull my mask down underneath my nose because my glasses are fogging up. "Our Constitution informs us that education devolves to the people, we the people. No governor, Trump, or Dr. Fiasco can tell us otherwise, we decide. For the love of God in our children, no restrictions, no social distancing, how pathetic. No masks, no fear. Please, people, open your eyes and brains, there is no Corona-19, and if there were, let us die standing on our feet. My prospective fifth grader will not be sent to a house of fear and isolation. Lockdowns, lockdowns, and now this COVID pandemic nonsense. Stop watching the television and start thinking while we still have time. Thank you. Stephen L. Finelli. Questions or comments? Feel free to call me, 603-991-8964. You can't see the power structure training their guns on everybody. Let the home of the brave rise again, right here in the home of the American Yankee." That's it. Any other public comment out there?
I would, yes, I want to echo, thank you very much for coming. Please, please continue to stay in touch with us. We may not have the answers to your questions, but you may be asking a question that we need to be considering. The reopening team, myself, the leadership team, are committed to being open and transparent about this. Even when you disagree with us, we want you at the very least to know our rationale so that you can understand where we're coming from, and we welcome any and all communication around this. Please, 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 do not think twice about emailing one of us or calling one of us so that we can help begin to allay some of your anxiety and some of your fears. And thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at 8:04 PM. Have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's a wrap. Thank you.